It is 6:00 PM here in the boardroom, August 15th, Tuesday. Welcome, everyone, to the business meeting of the ASD School Board. We have all board members present in the boardroom with, except, exception of President Bellamy, who is online. With that said, our next item is the flag salute and land acknowledgement. Josh, if you would lead us in the flag salute, then read the land acknowledgement, please.
We acknowledge that we gather here today on the traditional lands of the Denina people of the Upper Cook Inlet. For thousands of years, the Denina people have been and continue to be the stewards of this land. ASD is committed to diversity and inclusion, and it is with honor and respect that we recognize all indigenous people who live and learn in our community.
Thank you, Josh. We want to welcome you to our meeting and thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District School Board. The board thanks students, parents, teachers, staff, school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, your talent, and your tax dollars. With that said, we have the agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as written?
Still moved?
Second. Moved by Member Lessons, seconded by Member Holloman. Any objection? Hearing seeing none, the agenda is approved. Thank you. We next have our military report. My understanding is Colonel Dunn is with us this evening. Welcome, Colonel. Thank you for being here.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me out here. As, as Mr. Jacob said, I'm Colonel Eric Dunn. I'm the mission support group commander on Joint Base Elmandorf-Richardson. It's good to be here. I just have a couple of quick items to talk about, very short thank yous. First, thank you, Mr. Anderson, and also to the communications department for just the awesome communications back and forth. I know you came out to our Community Action Council and spoke to all of our military leadership about what's upcoming for the schools on base. And just, the communication flow has just been exceptional, and, and we really appreciate it. That, that's huge. I know that we're only three elementary schools out of probably ninety-plus schools throughout the district, but it, but it was really nice to get that level of attention and level of support. Also, thank you for the, to the transportation team. I, I know that our base has some logistics challenges with the closing of Versa Major that started last year, and just helping us get the students' bus from one end of the base all the way to the other, to the other two schools, has been really helpful, and we appreciate maintaining those bus routes. Everything looks really good for this upcoming school year, and, and we appreciate that. And then, with the, we just signed this summer, the Anchorage School District in the Joint Base Elmandorf-Richardson School Partnership Program Memorandum of Agreement. Dr. Bryant, thank you for your support on that. I, I think it's gonna be really neat. We're gonna connect school principals with military units and squadrons, almost like an adopt-the-school type thing. So, as that progresses, I think that'll be a really neat opportunity, not only for the schools with, with military children, but, but for those units as well, to give a little bit back to the school district. With that, that's all I've got for tonight. Do you all have any questions for me or need anything from us at J-Bear?
Thank you, Colonel. Board members' questions for, regarding our military report. Hearing seeing none, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item is our student representative report. Mr. Peck?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm student representative, also the president of the Student Advisory Board, and I'm excited to start another school year this year. There is one more school board meeting until our first student advisory board meeting, which will take place on September 12th. And during that meeting, I will report and recap everything that happened during these school board meetings, through the notes that I am and have been taking to our SAB representatives, and hopefully spur some conversations on the matters that are discussed within these chambers. And I am willing and planning to report what occurs in our student advisory report meetings to here, as well after they take place. And with two more days until the start of school, I can feel the air charged with excitement and promise, as both parents and students are frantically purchasing school, last-minute school supplies. And I have to admit that I'm also guilty of that, but this, all this excitement reminds me that our schools are not merely buildings, nor our classrooms, desks, and walls. They are the nurturing grounds for our future leaders and innovators and thinkers of our society, and I take that as a heavy responsibility and burden. And I'm willing to dedicate my time and focus to this, just as every other school board member and administrator here is doing. I would also like to express my heartfelt gratitude to all the staff and educators in our district, as your passion for education inspires students like me to put in the extra effort when we are studying and taking part in our educational paths. And this ever-evolving landscape of education, the challenges we face are certainly as diverse as our student body and our school community. And as your student representative, I pledge to be a bridge between the voices of our peers and the decisions made here. I eagerly anticipate the discussions, collaborations, accomplishments that lie ahead this school year. Thank you.
Well said, sir. Thank you for serving. Any questions for our student representative? Member Donnelly?
What time of day and where is the upcoming September 12th meeting?
So, it's gonna be, I believe, in the morning at 8:15 to 10:15 AM in this room on September 12th, and then it will happen every month, which the following meeting is on October 10th.
Any other questions?
Just a point of clarification. The SAB meetings follow an alternating schedule. There's an early, so that 8:00, 8:15 start time, and there's a late start time of 11:15. So, that helps the students not miss out only on that 8:15 AM class. So, if you were to go to the October 1, Member Donnelly, it's a, the late start. So, there's a whole schedule online.
Excellent point. Thank you, Member Lessons. Any other questions before we move on? Thank you for the report. Next item on the agenda is public comments. We do not have any student comments or public comments this evening, is my understanding. There is written public comment attached to our agenda for board members to review. Moving ahead is item E, our consent agenda. Would any board member like to pull a, an item off the consent agenda before we move to approve the remaining items? Hearing seeing none, I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Look to approve the consent agenda?
Motion made by Member Holloman, seconded by Member Wilson. Any objection? Hearing seeing none, the consent agenda has passed. Item F is action items. We have no action items this evening. Item G, non-action items. We have four before us that will be voted on in our first meeting of September. Does any board member wish to discuss a non-action item? Okay, hearing seeing none. We'll move on to the superintendent update, as we have no other public comment. Dr. Bryant, the floor is yours.
All right. That was a speedy meeting. I do have a couple things I want to share, because this is our last meeting before back to school and PLC Mondays. But before I get into that, you know, I first want to extend condolences on behalf of the district for the people of Maui. Our hearts are truly broken over this devastating tragedy. So, if you're able to, we encourage you to make a financial contribution to the rescue and recovery efforts, and the best place to go is mauicounty.gov, and the information is right there on the front page. So, on that note, I did want to talk about two topics. One, back to school, and two, a couple of just reminders and updates and a call to action about safety and security. So, on the back-to-school front, for Team ASD, we're solely focused on back-to-school. We're gearing up for the return of our students this Thursday, and we welcomed back our teachers yesterday, and look forward to seeing our families later in the week. Families may have questions about enrollment and other logistics and to-dos, and their best resource is asdk12.org/backtoschool. That's our one-stop shop for families to get the pertinent information. And I do want to share that it looks like all signs point to a smooth first day, knock on wood, especially when it comes to bus transportation. And me and the district staff will be spending much of day one in the buildings to welcome staff back and families back, and to support our building leaders to be helpful on that front. And really, personally, my eye is really on our first PLC Monday as a district, or at least district-wide, PLC Mondays. So, principals are in the process, if they haven't already, of communicating campus-specific information about late-start Mondays to families. And as I've shared with the board previously, my team will be out at our elementary schools across the district, so that we'll be documenting the needs of specific buildings, because the goal is, we'll collect the data, we'll debrief every Monday as a leadership team, and we'll determine the best ways to deploy resources long-term. So, at schools where there are hotspots for families dropping off at the regular time, we're gonna accommodate them, but we need to do our due diligence in understanding where the needs are and how we can be helpful to our schools. So, that's all I wanted to share on back-to-school. I did want to pivot to safety and security, because as we gear up for back-to-school, it's important for the entire community to be vigilant on the roads, in our neighborhoods, and around our schools, as morning and afternoon traffic swings back into full gear with children. So, safety and security is all of our responsibility as a community, and ASD takes its role in safety and security very seriously. So, just to remind the board and the community, a few things this year that are in the works. For one, we're in the process of standardizing visitor management system across the district. I think that's long overdue, and was one of the things I noticed when I onboarded here, was that we didn't have that, and I think that's important. And in addition to that, we're leveraging our bond dollars, as we shared earlier this afternoon, to continue adding secure safety vestibles to our elementary schools, and also facilitating other security upgrades in our buildings. I also believe that training is key, and that's why senior leadership, including myself, participated in multiple days of training this summer, thinking through numerous serious crisis scenarios. And we've calendared similar trainings for our building leaders, so they can think through how they're going to tackle those issues from their lens. And above all, and I shared this with the media yesterday, is that I want to model and emphasize and hold Team ASD accountable to a culture of safety in our organization. So, that means that we need to be militant about enforcing our authorized entry points and keeping people out of unauthorized entry points, because essentially, we need to know who's in our buildings and why. And that's, that could be a culture shift from decades ago, but the times are changing, and we need to take safety and security of our buildings very seriously. It's a culture shift. And, you know, when any of us see something or hear something in our buildings, or in a restroom, or on a bus, we need to say something urgently, all of us, staff, students, family members. We can't be afraid about being wrong. Again, it's that culture of safety. We need to be afraid about being right about what we suspect is going on in our schools. So, I wanted to shout out that Stop It is one tool that we have in our arsenal, which is monitored 24/7 as an anonymous reporting tool on numerous issues. And of course, we truly value our SROs and mental support staff as another layer of support, and they've also been receiving critical training on topics related to their positions. And my call to action really is that we can't do it alone. Families, we truly do need your help to securely store firearms, because we want to ensure that they don't fall into the wrong hands, and that goes a long way in not just keeping our school building safe, but honestly, our neighborhoods and our streets safe. So, you know, I know I said I would focus on our goals and guardrails, but to be frank with you, to have a safe and healthy instructional environment, we need to have confidence that our buildings are safe places to be. So, that's why I wanted to spend a few minutes just to share my take on safety and security and kind of where we're headed, and there's still a lot of work to be done, but it's something that, in addition to the goals and guardrails directly, I'm emphasizing, because our families need to know that it's, it's on our minds. So, I'll leave it at that. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. We have questions for the superintendent. Member Lessons?
I haven't floated this yet, and it's a little bit early, but I'm just wondering if we have a general sense of whether our enrollment numbers are tracking predictions, or I know that it's a little early to tell, and I'm sure enrollment is still an ongoing process.
Yeah, it's a teeny bit early, but do know that we are monitoring it, and as we saw last year, our numbers tend to tick upwards as school begins, so that's never the final number. But with that said, attendance is really important, and something that we talked about as a leadership team, is that it's really those first three weeks that are most important in setting those routines and urgency around students getting to school. So, please know that enrollment is at the top of our mind, and if we don't share an update and a upcoming board connect, we can definitely give some firm numbers next time we need.
Any other questions for the superintendent? Member Donnelly?
Thank you, Mr. President. And Dr. Bryant, what board policy was the basis of your denial of former U.S. Cabinet Secretary Dr. Ben Carson speaking at Mountain View School?
Sure, that's a great question, Member Donnelly. There is not a specific policy. It's within the authority of the superintendent to make that call, and I'm happy to summarize some of the thinking that went into that, perhaps in a board connect, but we respectfully decline the invitation.
So, just the follow-up question.
Go ahead, Member Donnelly.
So, if Vice President Harris was in town, and she did a fundraiser with the Democrat Bartlett Club, would you not let her speak at one of our schools if she wanted to?
That's not a situation that I have encountered, but these situations are case by case, and this isn't necessarily a partisan thing. This is really about protocols and just keeping the focus on what it needs to be, which is on back-to-school and safety.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. Thank you, Member Donnelly. Any other questions for the superintendent? Hearing seeing none, we'll move on to J, School Board Administration comments and Communications. Dr. Bryant, are there any other administration comments before we go to school board comments?
None on this end. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll start with school board member comments. We'll start with Member Higgins and get the lengthy comment out of the way first. The floor is yours, sir.
I usually like to start by summarizing the comments that were made here, but that's a rather short presentation today, so not too much with that. I just, this is beginning of a school year, and I think about some of the things I've heard, like during breaks with, we had sessions, and the role, the effectiveness of education is with tutoring support for kids, and it's not in the classroom, it can be out of the classroom. So, the, the opportunity for communities to get engaged in that, parents to be engaged, others, is really critical for academic success, too, and they can play a big role. I hope we see a change, no, enhancement this year of getting people more engaged that way in attendance. Other than that, I hate to say it, but my comments are short. Can I reserve the rest of the time for the next school board meeting?
I'm afraid Robert's rule doesn't contemplate for such a thing, Member Higgins, but I appreciate the remark. Next, we have our student representative. Anything else, Mr. Peck?
I guess I could reiterate that I would like to share my commitment to advocating for our students here, and that I'm open for any feedback, ideas, and challenges that you guys have, and if you do, I would love to address it during these meetings.
Thank you, sir. Member Donnelly, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say that I disagreed with the analysis that the school district administration came up regarding family partnership, school-parents funding. I'm concerned that the administration made a commitment to those parents that we weren't going to change anything, and yet, within a few months, we radically changed what they had planned on for funding, and it's, I think it's very unfortunate. I mean, it leads to a question of credibility, and there was a promise made, and it hasn't been kept, and I'm just very concerned about that, and I disagree with that decision.
Thank you, Member Donnelly. We'll go down to Member Wilson.
So, our staff has been super busy getting ready for the school year. I had the privilege of stopping by to visit the new teacher orientation at East High School, and that was quite impressive, actually. It's, in talking with the staff, and I should start with a thank you to Dr. Beltran and her staff for the tour. It was the second year that they've done this, as, as I understand, and they took feedback from the first year to implement changes to improve this training even more. I, I didn't have the privilege of doing a walkthrough last year, but it was quite impressive. We have a lot of new staff that has joined ASD from around the state and around the country, and so I want to welcome them. I wanted to also point out that I've been to several schools, and their staff, all the staff around the district, has been busy unpacking, prepping for students to return to school, getting their, their rooms ready. And so, I just wanted to say thank you for their continued commitment to, to our students and our community. I also had the privilege of attending Wendler Middle School staff breakfast, so there, there was a breakfast presented for their, their staff to start the school year, and I know many of our schools have done that, so I think they're, they're all off to a wonderful start, which I'm super excited about. I also wanted to point out that, that Josh is an amazing example of the articulate, poised, and thoughtful students in our district, so thank you for that. You're, you're extremely prepared at the beginning of every meeting, so I wanted to point that out, because you, you are a wonderful example. Thank you. Our next communications committee meeting is going to be on Thursday, September 7th, at 1:00 PM, so please feel free to join us, and thank you.
Thank you, Member Wilson. Member Lessons, the floor is yours.
Well, I second Member Wilson's comments about Josh. Thank you for being so deeply present with this board. We are really happy to have you with us. I'm looking forward to school starting this Thursday for our grades 1 through 12, and next week for our kindergartners. I'm really excited for the student growth that I think our community is poised to see. Last year was really busy, and we worked through, anyway, ELA curricula, the concept of PLC Mondays, wellness policy changes, robust mental health supports, fentanyl education, I feel like the lit, not to speak of, you know, robust attempts at recruiting and retaining our bus drivers and other critical staff. So, it will be really just wonderful to see these things coming together, and I'm excited for that. But I have a few requests, so thank you, Dr. Bryant, for your words about keeping an eye on our students walking and biking to school, and that's, it's important to just get that message out. Second, you know, parents, caregivers of all types, educators, the community at large, we all need to keep student attendance at the forefront of our minds this year. I don't know if other board members saw the recent research that came out. Out of forty states and the District of Columbia, Alaska as a whole had a larger increase in rates of chronic absenteeism than any of the other thirty-nine states or the District of Columbia between 2018-19 and 21-22. That's, I mean, we've talked, I've talked about chronic absenteeism, but that's really not a figure that the state needs to be as proud of, and so we need to work collectively on resolving that. We didn't discuss memorandum 012 tonight. We talked about it at finance. We talked about it, I think, last, the last board meeting. But I want to urge community members, and parents, caregivers especially, to really continue to reach out to their Anchorage area legislators to urge support for a veto override. Last meeting, we heard that after we move forward with, as we did tonight, with the allocation of the One Time Funds, as spelled out in memorandum 012, ASD's projected deficit for FY '25 will be approximately $65 million, and that could equate to 650 positions lost. So, by my calculation, every $10 million in the red is about 100 jobs. So, with the governor's veto of essentially $25 million from ASD, there was more statewide, but it would have meant another $25 million to ASD, that means 250 jobs. So, if we can move our legislators towards somehow coming up with a veto override, that could really help the district's position focusing on student outcomes with more resources than we're gonna have, as we steer down the barrel of a really uncomfortable fall and winter planning for next year's budget. And finally, again, Dr. Bryant, thank you for your words. You know, we're starting these exciting new chapters this year with the school year, but my heart really goes out to the students, families, and staff of, and I'll try to pronounce the words, the, the names correctly. King Kekaukue High, Princess Nahi Ina Ina Elementary, Lahaina Intermediate, and Lahaina Luna High, which all remain closed, and King Kameha Mayha III Elementary, which was damaged by unrepair. So, those are a lot of schools in Maui feeling a lot of pain. So, there are things that community members can do here to support them, but I kind of wanted to name the schools. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Member Lessons. Member Holloman, the floor is yours.
Yeah, I, I would like to echo a number of the comments, just that it's easy to get caught up in the mechanics of the school opening up again. For a lot of years, when I worked in technology, I was back in the building three, four weeks before teacher's first day, and it's, there's just one atmosphere when it's all adults and you're doing that stuff, and then there's a moment where kids start showing up, and everything changes. The atmosphere changes, and it really becomes school again. I, I hope we're able to let people focus on the main thing on those, on those first days, and really, really get the year off to a great start, which I, I think is the focus of all our staff out in the buildings, because it's right in front of them, and they see it. Other than that, just a lot of appreciation for all the work that everybody's doing out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Holloman. We have President Bellamy online?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Chair. Just a few comments. I do want to echo the superintendent's condolences and sympathies for the Maui disaster. And, and like Member Lessons, I've been tracking the schools that have, that she just shared the names of. You did a good job, Kelly, I think, in pronouncing them. And, and I just know, I just know that Alaska is closely linked to Hawaii, period. And I just know, I just know that Alaska is closely linked to Hawaii, period, especially Maui. Some of us know people who have made their home on that island, and I just want to thank the superintendent for, you know, for his comments and acknowledgements. And as school kicks in, we just have to be ready for the trauma that that might cause some of our families. I want to speak in support of the administration's guidance. The administration never said allotments could not, would not be used, but I appreciate the clarification on how allotments can be used. This board has been discussing the, you know, how allotments are used and how to clarify. So I just want to speak in support of that guidance. I think it clearly advises families on how they can use, not whether they get an allotment, but how they can, according to the Anchorage School District, according to the Constitution, and according to the guidance given by the Attorney General, how families can expect to get their allotment expenditures approved. And in the end, those allotments, however they were done in the past, may no longer be used to fund private school education. And if that changes in the future, then the district will change its guidance. Finally, a reminder to our, to the board, community council meetings are kicking back up. Make sure you, and I know Amanda's going to be sending out those invites as soon as they are updated online, but if you know who your councils are, you might want to give the president a call to just confirm that they are not going to meet in August, that they will be meeting in September, or beginning to meet in September. A very, a few of them are meeting in August, though, so you might want to check on that. And with that, Ms. Chair, I conclude. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I will just chime in briefly to add that I especially agree with and echo the remarks regarding our colleagues and families who have connections to Maui. Definitely troubling times, and anxious to see how we can support. Also excited, both as a parent and as a board member, for the start of school, and appreciate our board maintaining the focus on our students, our families, and supporting our staff and achieving our board goals, and excited to review those next month. So with that said, we have concluded our business. I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Made by Member Holloman, seconded by Member Lessons. Seeing no objection, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.